Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. It's Tuesday, October 22nd. It's a little after 7:30. We just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation. Jumping right into our, well, first of all, for anyone who is watching at home currently, not streaming this later on or looking at the, anyone who's watching live, if you haven't voted on the school bond yet in the Blind Brook School District, you still have an hour and 15 minutes or thereabouts. So, but moving right into our agenda, resolution number one, considering an exemption extension of chapter 158, section 2.1 of the village code regarding a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Portchester School District.
Whereas in April 2023, the board approved a local law enacting a seasonal gas-powered leaf blower ban from May 1st to September 30th, effective May of this year. And whereas upon the village code property, within the village code, properties with at least five acres of property can apply to the village for a full or partial exemption or exemption, extension or exemption of the law. And whereas an application has been distributed to the eligible properties of the village and also placed on our website. And whereas in August 2023, the Board of Trustees approved a request for an exemption of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf ban, blower ban for the Portchester School District. And whereas the one-year exemption was granted by the village board and expired on October 1st, 2024. And whereas on October 10th, 2024, the Portchester School District submitted an application for further exemption from the requirements of the local law requiring a seasonal ban on gas-powered leaf blowers at the Portchester Middle School and High School. And therefore be resolved that after consideration of the intent of the local law, as well as consideration raised in the application from representatives of the Portchester School District, the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby denies, approves, or approves with conditions, the request for an exemption of the village code enacting a seasonal leaf blower ban for the Portchester School District.
Thank you, Chris. And we'll hold off on a motion in a second until we figure out what we're doing. Are you here representing the school district?
Oh, yeah.
All right. If you wouldn't mind coming up, please. I was taking a wild guess there, you know? I don't think anything else on our agenda might have been involved.
I think it works here, so I think I'm going to go on. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the Board of Trustees for allowing me to voice our case for gas-powered leaf blower exemption. The Portchester Ry School District recognizes the benefits of electric leaf blowers. We have issued electric leaf blowers toward the individual schools and their custodial staff to use daily to clean the sidewalks and the entrances. The electric blowers are quieter, which creates more of a conducive learning environment and minimizes disturbances during school hours. Additionally, they produce zero emissions at the point of use. To further support this initiative, the district has invested in electric lawn mowers, specifically at the middle school, demonstrating a comprehensive approach to greener landscaping practices. This investment not only reduces the carbon footprint, but also lowers long-term maintenance costs as electric equipment typically requires less servicing than gas-powered alternatives. By embracing the, these electric tools, the district enhances its commitment to creating a healthier environment for students, staff, and the community. Where we need the exemption is in the larger areas of the high school and middle school, the perimeter of each building, where battery blowers do not have the power to do the job required. We would need a rack of batteries to ensure that all the work gets completed and would take much longer to do the job compared to gas-powered motors, blowers, sorry. The Portchester Ry School District should be allowed to use gas-powered leaf blowers because they offer superior power, efficiency compared to the battery-operated ones in the areas I mentioned. Gas-powered blowers can handle heavier debris, cover larger areas more quickly, which is crucial for maintaining a safe and clean outdoor environments for students and staff as well. This includes clearing not only leaves that have fallen, but also dry snow from entrances and sidewalks. Using gas-powered equipment, the district can ensure timely and effective landscaping without compromising on performance. The longer it takes for the work to be done, the more it costs us in labor. The cost could potentially raise taxes, and we are trying not to put any additional burdens on the taxpayers of Rybrook. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I have to say you win an award for being the first to come in to renew the exemptions.
Somebody's got to be first off the boat.
Yeah. You know, and just to be clear, just, I just want to make sure that everything's clear, that this is a seasonal leaf blower ban. So it's, you know, from now until May, you know, leaf blowers are allowed to be used. So it wouldn't really affect the snow much or the leaf season, which is right now.
But it would allow us to use the gas leaf blowers during that time, so.
They are allowed right now. So it's, the ban is really only in effect from, what is it, May 1st to October?
Yeah.
To September 30th.
Oh, September 30th.
Weather's crazy, and I get it, but we just want to make sure that we're prepared as best we can.
Yeah.
And with safety, always primary.
When do you use the blowers? At what point in the day or a week?
We can't start them until after 8:30. That's a start because there's a sound, you know, noise pollution is one of the things.
Right, but during school hours?
Yeah, we use it during school hours, but it's mostly around the perimeters. And so when we're, like, if you think about the fencing around the middle school and areas there, yeah, we're away from the school, but, you know, in order for us to do that, having another vehicle that's just charging batteries and following, it's just time-consuming. So it's just a lot easier for us to back, back blow and make sure we're going back and getting it taken care of.
I mean, it's, it's good news, but you are using some electric blowers around.
Yeah, we just recently purchased, this spring, the mowers for the middle school. So we have the custodians taking care of the courtyard areas. So we're trying to transition where we can and, you know, so that the job can get done. Plus, when we were cutting it with the gas, it was being sucked into our air intakes. People complained. So now we're able to do it during the day. It's quieter for sure. We understand the importance of it all. It's just a matter of time efficiency that we're really looking at and making sure we can get it done timely.
Other questions or comments?
No, I'm glad that you see a positive impact on it.
Yeah, and to me, it's great seeing the steps that the school district is taking. You know, I always have trouble with this one, with the school district one, because, you know, when it comes to building or other things, the district doesn't fall within the local code. It only answers to the state code. So I was always surprised to find that the schools weren't automatically exempted from this because of, because, you know, they would actually have to adhere to local code. You know, I guess my personal opinion would be to grant a one-year exemption.
Yep.
Right, I think.
I am glad to go along with that because at least the school district has demonstrated a willingness to try to get better.
Absolutely.
As opposed.
Do we want two-year then?
No.
I'm curious to see what their successors.
I want to see further growth.
Yeah, we want to hear what you do in a year.
Chris, let's, let's, or let's, can I have, can I have a motion in a second for a one-year exemption? So that would be to October of '25, right?
Yep.
That move for one year, for change of one year.
You're approving, yep, you're approving the request for the exemption through October 2025.
Yeah, with no, with no conditions.
Yeah, and there was no conditions last year on this particular application, right?
All right, can I have a motion second on that?
I already motioned.
Second.
Second.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'd be remiss in saying homecoming's coming, pep rally on Friday, homecoming Saturdays.
Oh, great weather.
Good to know, yeah, great weather for it.
I'll see you outside of here one, once or twice.
I'm walking distance to the high school, so I may have to take advantage of that.
If you see me, please come up and say hi.
That's amazing. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, resolution number two, considering compensation for non-union personnel for the '22, '20, that can't be right.
'24, '25.
'24, '25. Like, wow, are we that far behind?
If you hit refresh, it'll be updated.
Okay. That would put us, yeah, no, I know, not so good.
Okay, so now therefore be resolved that the following compensation be provided for non-union personnel effective June 1st, 2024. And there's a listing of, I think, 24 non-union personnel, which is mostly office staff, department heads, the police chief, the police lieutenant. And there's a listing of all the non-union personnel, which has been discussed with the village board. The actual increases will be available in my office after the meeting. But generally with, with two exceptions, it's a 3.25 increase, which is very appreciated by the village staff. Thank you to the board. And be it further resolved that Alfred DeVito's original offer of employment be modified to reflect that he shall be entitled to the benefit of continuing to receive health insurance as a retiree for the life of the retiring spouse with at least 10 years' experience working with, full-time with the Village of Rybrook. I can explain that after the court.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do I, do I need another motion to reduce Michael's? That comment?
Wow.
Valley's not going to be plowed.
Mr. DeVito's, the clause on that one is when he was first hired, this was the benefit shortly before, up until a little while before he was hired, and that was what was described to him in his offer of employment, but it's not reflected in the offer letter. So we just want to clear, clean that up and clear that up on what was told to him. And the other ones, again, the board has a listing of all the titles, and this, the action is generally a 3.25% increase across the board with two exceptions.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Those who have heard me talk about the staff in the Village of Rybrook or, you know, it's like listening to a broken record, but, you know, it's, we are very lucky to have the staff that we do. And that goes for all, all of the employees, not just the, you know, non-union. In this resolution, we're increasing the salaries of the non-union employees, and just everyone does an amazing job. And it, it's what makes Rybrook a great place to live. A great place to be, be with your family, great place to shop, great place to just spend some time. And so we really appreciate the efforts of everyone, not just, not just the folks in this room, who we are very appreciative of, absolutely. But to every staff who comes in day after day to, you know, whether it's people that you're seeing every day, like police or fire or in the rec, but also people behind the scenes in treasury and our DPW and our building department. Everyone gives it such a great effort that makes it great for the residents, but also makes it very easy for us up here on this day as to do what we've been elected to do. It just, it, it makes this a wonderful place. It makes Rybrook what Rybrook is. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. Well deserved. And we look forward to another good year.
On behalf of the staff, I just want to say thank you to the board as well. You guys give us constant support. You see the nods from Greg and Michael and Greg, and the board always gives us so much support and allow us to do our job and take risks and do things professionally and continue to learn and grow. So thank you to the board. Thank you for the increases, and thank you for all the support.
I was just going to say that we are not only trustees, but we're residents of the Village of Rybrook. And from the top down and the bottom up, we are all fortunate to be living in this fabulous municipality.
It's a well-oiled machine, and I feel that everybody is deserving of our efforts because you do so much for us. So congratulations.
Do it all.
Thank you.
All right. I think we already have the motion in a second.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Yes.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number three, considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and FEMA for grant funding for self-contained breathing apparatus for, for the fire department.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has been awarded a grant by FEMA in the amount of $85,714.28, important 28 cents, for nine self-containing breathing apparatuses or SCBAs for the fire department. And whereas Rybrook must enter into an agreement with FEMA to accept the grant funds. And whereas the Village of Rybrook is required to contribute 5% matching cost of $4,285.72 as per grant agreement stipulations. And whereas Rybrook is interested in entering an agreement with FEMA to receive the grant award in the amount of $85,714.28. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement between the Village of Rybrook and FEMA for grant funding for nine SCBAs for the fire department in the amount of the $85,714.28 and a 5% matching cost of $4,285.72, subject to the modification by council. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I moved. Second.
This is a grant, if you want.
5% will take any time.
I know. 95% paid for. This is phenomenal. Any other background? Pretty straightforward.
Nope. This is something that we were able to, we set, you know, the, our grant writer meets with the departments. We talk monthly with all the department heads and all staff, trying to figure out what the needs are. Our fire department's involved in those discussions. This is a priority for them, and so we were able to get this grant, and we're happy to recommend it.
Great. Any questions or comments?
Yes, I personally favor apparatuses being the plural of apparatus, as opposed to apparatuses. It's a lot like equipment. You don't say equipments.
Right, you don't say equipments. Yeah, it's equipment.
Yes.
That's my personal.
I would agree.
Yes.
And I just have one question with regard to this, with the FEMA grant through that company that we use.
Millennium.
That is amazing. Congratulations again. That's a big win.
Yep. Yeah, no, they're doing great. Right now, we're kind of saying, we need to be able to manage all these, so.
No, no, I would say, don't, I'd say, don't stop, don't stop.
Well, we'll show you. We can share a spreadsheet that Greg's prepared because we, we had to keep some spreadsheets, just massive spreadsheets, to kind of lace it where everything is and each one of the portals and each one of the steps, so.
Right.
That's great. I mean, I think it's great. Did we, did we share this information with? All right, let's talk offline. Never mind.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments?
No.
See, I stopped my.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, probably. All right, resolution number four, sorry, another grant one. Considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for grant funding for the development of a tree inventory.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook is awarded a grant by the New York State DEC in the amount of $50,000 for grant funding for a tree inventory. And whereas Rybrook must enter into an agreement with DEC to accept the grant funds. And whereas Rybrook is interested in the agreement with DEC to receive the grant award of $50,000. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the agreement with Rybrook, between Rybrook and DEC for grant funding for the development of a tree inventory in the amount of $50,000, subject to by council, a modification by council. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator are authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please? Chris, I wonder whether there's more informa, has anything been written as far as what exactly we're going, I mean, is this a canopy?
Yeah, the application, we didn't give you the.
Is this a canopy survey, like a street tree inventory?
Mike, do you want to give an update? Because you worked with.
Street trees.
This is our street trees. So one of the things, a lot of communities who are able to do it, you know, were able to have an inventory of what are, which ones are our street trees, which are not. You know, you get a lot of other things that, you know, you don't know which ones have, over time, it's hard to tell, other than where they're located, you know, how far in off the street. So this is a way to kind of look at our street tree inventory. It's a valuable tool for Mike Noack and for his staff to be able to really evaluate what our, what our trees are, the conditions of the trees, and what types of trees are out there.
Great. So it's basically urban forestry.
Yeah, and street trees, since it's, we'll start with our streetscape since that's what, really what we, what we manage.
Nice. Well, this is exciting. Glad to be, glad to see this going on. Any questions or comments?
No, sounds good.
Sounds great.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. All right, resolution number five, I always lose track of numbers. Resolution number five, considering reallocation of capital funds for road resurfacing.
Sorry. Okay, this is, the fine transfer between capital projects is hereby approved. This is from road resurfacing in the current year to road resurfacing in a project in last year in the amount of $242,754.46. And then be further resolved that the capital project budget is restated as follows, and it's basically just restating that the general obligation funds will be allocated to further road resurfacing of that amount of the $242,754. I'll explain it a lot easier in a second.
Okay. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All right, let's hear this easier explanation.
So basically, you know, we have capital projects that are, that are selected for each particular year. In this case, we had last year's funds and this year's funds. So what we're doing is this year's budget, remember, we have a multi-year budget for multi-year costs for street resurfacing. So what you have here is, when we did the street resurfacing, we ended up doing more streets this year than, than we expected. So we're just moving the funds, it's just easier to move the funds from this year to last year's project versus last year's to this year's project. We could have done it that way too, but it was just easier to have it go down that way. And that still leaves a balance for this year. So we are able to transfer it out, close out last year's project with all the streets that were done, and all that we have left remaining is this year's project and, and the amount of, once we get the CHIPS funding, yeah, 250, it'll be 257, 245 estimated, might be more depending on how much CHIPS we get. But that'll be after the two CHIPS reimbursements are submitted.
All right, so it's, so it's not affecting our ability to resurface the roads this year in any way. It's.
Actually, did more this year.
This is.
Instead of 500, we did 700?
Right.
Yeah, almost eight.
252.
Right, well, this is wonderful. I mean, and, you know, obviously, we have full confidence in you and Trish to make sure that everything is, that the auditors are going to come in and say, no, this is very clean, so.
Well, that's why we did it this way.
And.
What we did is we purchased, what, manhole covers, we had to get, another roadway was covered, and one was an error in the amount that they estimated, but we can't argue it because it's based on the numbers that are in the bid, actually in the bid. So it's fine. So that went with the contractor estimated. So long story short, is we got more roads done than all that pricing that was done on a multi-year bid that Michael did a few years ago.
Well, thank you, Michael, for keeping up on this, not only the pricing, but also making sure our roads are in good condition.
We already thanked Michael. Now you're just sort of piling on. I think that's completely unnecessary.
And actually, I would say he's worthy, but I actually have one question because about streets.
Yes.
There is a lot of work being done by Con Edison and other people on a lot of the streets that we have already paved. What happens? Who fixes those? How soon does that happen? And that is really impactful because they, some of them were really, they dug up huge holes.
Hugely frustrating.
Remember I said, do we know any work that's going to be done?
And we do do that. Michael, you wanted to describe how you, what you do. You let the, you let the utilities companies know ahead of time, and then walk through that procedure if you don't mind.
Michael, just remember your thank you is in jeopardy.
I need members of the board, a sincere thank you from the bottom of my heart for everything. It's been said earlier, the board's awesome, and you support staff here tremendously. And you allow us to perform our duties openly, and you are always there to support us. So it really shows, and it's really appreciated. So thank you for what you guys did tonight. With regards to Con Edison, Veolia, other utilities that perform work in the roadway, our code has stipulation on restoration, especially during the winter time. We require concrete to be backfilled in the roadway to help prevent the settling. During summer months, when a patch is done or work is done, whether it's a gas leak, water main break, that patch is temporary, okay? And yes, it's messy. Yes, it's not beautiful. It's not smooth. It's intended to be that way because it's going to settle. Even though they come pack the dirt, even though they use a loader and a backhoe to pack it down, it still will settle. So that usually takes anywhere from one to three months to settle. So the utility company won't do a final restoration because they're going to then wind up coming back in two, three months because now there's a pothole or a sinkhole. So that's what, that's what happens with regards to that. Both water company and gas company filed for street opening permits, so we do have a log of who's doing work where. With respect to roads that we recently paved, Con Edison is a little more forward than Veolia or some other utility companies. And I'm not here to badmouth anybody, and that's not what this is. They all work well in the sandbox with us. But certain companies are more strategic in their approach where Con Edison will actually call up and they email municipalities every year for their paving list upfront. And on newly paved roads, within, I believe, three years or five years, I have to look at the code, they're required to mill and pave curb to curb. Okay, so basically that patch has to be cut out from this side of the road to across the street, okay? Currently have the same situation right now on the road that we just paved. Someone, I just approved a street opening permit for a new gas line. They wanted me not to pave the road, but we were there. The road was milled. I have no choice. We have to pave. So in that instance, the utility company will have to mill and pave from that home or a side to across the street, basically the full width of the road. So they're responsible for that. But yeah, there is a one to three-month window for patches to settle, at which point we do call them back. We ask them to come and top it off, level it off. Sometimes we'll tell them to plate it, which is not always well-received, but sometimes it's a better option.
No, because the winter's coming, so if they just worked on some of those properties, they obviously cannot do the whole street now.
You're still pushing it right now with the temperatures. Many municipalities are still paving and they're trying to get the last, you know, the last of it done. But yeah, we're slowly creeping on the end of the season. So haven't heard the phone call yet from the asphalt companies on when they're going to pull the plug. But right now, they're going hot and heavy still.
I would imagine so. Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, we try to let them, we try to get it ahead of time. So for like Con Edison, if, for stuff that gets planned, you know, if we know about it, then, then you could work with that. Obviously, you can have other situations where there's a leak or whatever. They've just got to come in and take care of it. That's, that's a little different. But where we get frustrated is if there's something that they were just planning on doing that wasn't shared, or they didn't, you know, didn't look at our list or whatever it is, that's where it gets frustrating. If it's something that's not an emergency or not a leak that's being repaired and just doing some general maintenance.
And we have had that happen, and in the past, certain utility companies have been more friendly with regards to using our, our contract numbers, reimbursing the village the full amount for the milling, paving, and then we just have our contractor do it. So we're able to work with the utility companies on getting it done correctly.
Michael, as long as you're up there on another subject, I just want to congratulate you and your crews on doing a great job with the leaf removal so far.
Ooh.
That is strictly the crews, but thank you. And office staff backend, I mean, Jessica does the uploading of the information online. That's her task, and the staff out in the field always do a great job and are very appreciative of them and their capabilities. You know, it's not a fun task, the noise, the dust, the safety out in the roadway. It is a hazardous job, and they do a great job at it. Right now, we're five to seven days out on a rotation. We have three trucks out. My biggest urge to residents and to their landscapers is please do not push the piles into the roadway. Your grass is going dormant. Leaves on it will not kill your grass. It may discolor them, will not kill them. Please keep half the pile on the lawn in the curb, half in the roadway because the piles are getting big right now. Leaves are dropping quick. And having those big piles in the roadway will block vehicular traffic. And we do not reroute our trucks. They go down the road, they're on a schedule. We will not reroute our vehicles because someone came behind us to put leaves out. We will not reroute our vehicles because someone came behind us to put leaves out. So, it's very important that just disrupts the whole operation.
It makes it very inefficient if you reroute.
Yes.
Right. So, is there any kind of information we can put on Facebook to reiterate this? And, and also for us to contact the landscapers like we did when? We have a lot of their information because they've applied for permits to use their stuff.
No, that's a good idea.
So, we can be proactive and reach out to them, because it's not always--
No, we can do that.
We have to communicate this.
Yeah, Greg has some contacts that he's-- Yeah.
Yeah, he has posted--
And the other thing is too--
It's not only, it's not for Facebook. It's not for me. I'm not blowing my leaves, my landscapers.
But we may, we can reach out to the landscapers association, too, and we can also do that.
That's what I think would be most helpful.
The other thing is, people, and one thing we could do--
And Spanish, too.
And the one thing we could do, if you guys can put on Facebook, too, is make sure we put the link to our website, you know, behind the scenes. So, what we do is every day, when they finish their routes at the end of the day, they're tracking what roads they're on. They report that to Jessica in Michael's office, and Jessica up, puts in the listings. We have a spreadsheet on our website that will account for what day people went on what street, and also an estimated return day, a return time. It's not exact. It's an estimate. But if we're on like a five to seven-day schedule, it'll say they're expected back in this five to seven days. And it'll tell you what days they were on your street, and it'll tell you what day is about. We are, based on the current patterns and pickup schedule, about when they'll be back. So, I can't imagine, I can't think of another place that would do something that does that. But I think we, we try to provide that information. We hope people are looking at it, because it is helpful.
Sure.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and they do say, because it's been a dry season, that the leaves are going to fall faster this year. Do you think that that is, uh, if true?
Very well may, yeah, because when they're, when, when they're not getting as much water, they'll, they'll go, the trees will go dormant earlier also.
I, I will say our leaf piles are getting big for this time of year.
And gorgeous, aren't they? Isn't the trees gorgeous this year?
Gorgeous.
The colors are just so sharp, yeah.
They're falling fast.
Really bright.
Yes.
All right.
It's also because we're out there looking.
So, back to the resolution, considering budget transfers for road resurfacing. I think we already have our--
I apologize for my distraction on that.
Oh, I can read. Justy Epstein?
Yes.
Justy Fisher?
Yes.
Justy Heiser?
Yes.
Justy Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six, considering modification to the village's procurement policy.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook's external auditors have recommended the village modify the written procurement policy within the comprehensive financial policy to ensure the village is in compliance with federal regulations regarding a check that vendors receive payments with federal funds are not suspended, disbarred, or otherwise excluded from participating--
Robotics empowers government--
federally funded transactions. And whereas Rybrook Administrator and Treasurer both support the recommendations made by the external auditors, and whereas Rybrook has proposed several modifications to the procurement policy to guarantee the village will adhere to the federal regulations, now therefore be resolved that Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves proposed modifications to procurement policy within the comprehensive financial policy as appropriate.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Motion.
Second.
I know this came as an outside recommendation. Can you give a little background, please?
Sure. So, we, what this does, what this does is puts in writing, we didn't have something in writing that the, when you're working with federal funds, that the federal, we need to do a search to make sure that the company that's being hired isn't having a disbar, hasn't, wasn't been disbarred or suspended or anything like that. So, one of the comments or recommendations of the auditors, it's not a, it's not a criticism. It's not an audit thing. It's just a recommendation, is to have written policies. We're actually getting ahead of what you're going to see next month in terms of just a comment or a recommendation. So, we're just getting that straight. There's no problem. There's been no issue. What it is, we're also making sure we are gearing up on all these, because we are now under a single audit for this year and next year. You have to go through a single audit process when you receive federal funds in excess of a certain dollar threshold. And because of the ARPA funds, and then because of the NRCS program for the buyout, we've exceeded that threshold. So, we want to make sure everything's, you know, t's crossed, i's hard, i's dark.
Do we already do that, though? Do we already search up, like?
Yeah, you do, but there's different lists. Normally, we'd look at like the New York State one, the Department of Labor one. There's actually a separate list that's maintained by the federal government. So, when you're using federal funds, you got to check against that one.
And does everyone have access to that one?
Uh, yes. Yeah, you can get access to it. So, you've just got to make sure they're not in the list, so you don't select somebody who's on that list. And what we have to do internally is now we're going to, when we go out for these bids or go out for RFPs, we're going to have, we do two things. One, we're going to have the contractor sign off that they're not on the list, and then we're going to just say, then we'll have a place where the staff will check it and verify it as well. And that'll, that'll be more than covering what the policy requires.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Justy Epstein?
Yes.
Justy Fisher?
Yes.
Justy Heiser?
Yes.
Justy Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven, considering a proposal with Michelin Mobility Intelligence for a Better Roads Pavement Assessment and Subscription.
This is the stuff I get excited about. Right, Mike? Michael's laughing.
Well, we spoke about this, so I know why.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook is interested in performing a pavement assessment of all village-owned streets, and whereas the village has received a proposal dated September 24, 2024, from Michelin Mobility Intelligence to perform a pavement assessment utilizing artificial intelligence as a projected price of $3,750 one-time. And that's actually up to 50 center lane miles. So, if ends up we're a little higher than what we estimated, it won't change for that cost. And then $100 per lane mile over the 50, 50 center lane miles for the Better Roads Pavement Assessment plus 1,250 for the Better Roads annual subscription, which prices may be modified based on the actual center line miles assessed. And whereas the mobility, Michelin Mobility Intelligence provided documentation that they are the sole source provided for the Better Roads Pavement Assessment product, which was developed and distributed exclusively by Michelin Mobility Intelligence, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village to accept the quote and proposal dated September 24, 2024, for Michelin Mobility Intelligence to perform the Better Roads Pavement Assessment, subject to modification of any terms or conditions by council. Be it further resolved that the projected cost is $3,750 one-time and plus 1,250 for the subscription, which prices may be modified based on the actual center line miles assessed. And be it further resolved, the mayor and administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purpose of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion second, please?
Second. What does center line mean?
It's like, so you're not--
It's not both directions.
Yeah, you're not, you're not, so read street and be--
One lane, one line.
It's just one, it's just one line.
Okay, thank you.
If it was two, although, you don't have to go there and back. You're just doing one.
Got it.
Yep. So, we just have a--
So, when do they do it, when the roads are empty?
No, we do it. Actually, we do this. So, we're going to show you a very brief, one-minute video on how the program works.
This is not Rybrook.
No. And this is only a minute, so just a minute. It goes very quick, but it'll give you a little quick overview about what the program does.
It's, it's a great video, because it's like watching a video game.
It is. It's amazing, isn't it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Robotics empowers governments and communities to make objective, data-driven decisions about their road network and public infrastructure assets. We automate image mapping and road assessments, generating interactive maps, unbiased ratings, and practical tools to save time and taxpayer dollars for hundreds of communities around the world. It all starts with a map of your road network in a smartphone. After a quick training session from a robotics expert, you'll drive your network, collecting visual data with your smartphone. Our artificial intelligence technology looks at each image and determines the severity of damage and identifies distresses for every 10 feet of road, giving each a one to five rating. Once the ratings have been determined, you can view the results on our platform called Roadway. Level one roads appear green and have little to no damage. Level five roads are red and have critical damage and major distresses. High-resolution images let you virtually drive along and inspect your roads at any time from your desktop, while the GIS-compatible shape file and CSV file with segment and point-level pavement rating data help you create your pavement management and maintenance plans. Learn more at roadbotics.com.
Who invented that?
Michelin. The road, the tire company.
Yeah, because they--
There's an interest there.
Yeah, what is--
So, that's a very short, we have, I mean, we can go on, and there's PowerPoints if you wanted to take a look at what different road ratings look like and things like that. I gave you the backup of the PowerPoint in the packet. But, uh, this is really exciting stuff, because right now, I don't know if you remember what, what we've done in the past is the Cornell Local Roads Program. And their, their pavement program is a pavement management index, pavement management index, right? PMI, PCI. And basically, it was, it's very labor-intensive and a little bit more subjective, because you're still going to have the subjectivity of the person who's driving around. Has to rate the roads, and then it all has to be entered into the system.
Much more time consuming.
Oh, gosh. It takes a long time to get, many, many months to do. You have to go for training. You're able to do this and get it done in two days. You're able to get all the roads tested, viewed, and then you upload it. And then within, literally, within a month, we're going to have all the, the system will be up and ready, and we'll be able to look at the data. So, Michael and I have been talking to them, talking to the company, and we think this is a fantastic product. It'll actually save us a lot of time, and it'll give us a lot of tools. You see those, we'll actually have documented 10-foot segments of every road in the village, and including what they're rated on each section. And then you can zoom in and say, what's going on in that street that there's one little section? We can zoom in wherever we are and just look and see exactly what it is at any point, at that point in time. And then every couple of years, you want to do it again. You know, you want to get another update, but it's very cost-effective. I mean, you think about what we cost to go to the training, the time in uploading it. We've hired engineering interns from college in the past. We've done all kinds of stuff to try to keep this up to date. So, this is a nice way to really have a lot of tools in our toolbox for the service.
So, you pay for once every three years?
You, what's that?
You pay once every three years?
No, you have to pay the subscription every year, which is like 1,250 or something, right? But the, whenever you do the paving, it's, um, it's up to 50 miles a certain cost. In this case, it's 3,750, I think, something like that.
Right.
3,750 for up to 50 miles. Where, they said we're 36. We thought we were closer to 50, but we'll find out when we actually do the, when they actually go through the roads, then we'll really know.
Okay.
But it's up to 50. It's the same price.
Oh, so that, right, doesn't--
So, it won't adjust. Anything over 50 is $100 a mile.
Right.
Which still isn't bad.
Nothing.
So, really neat stuff. It's using AI technology to rate the surface and, and rating of the roads, and we'll get a real good sense. And what it does is give you the tools to say, you know, is what we're doing able to keep up? What type of rating? What would we have to do? We can then take that data and try to look at it and analyze it internally to say, what can we do to then increase the ratings in different areas or the streets? Or is there particular areas of the village that needs more attention? It gives you real non-subjective data that you can really look at for making our decisions.
Good.
Cool.
Well, it actually, being, what, how soon do you anticipate doing this?
Probably the first quarter of next year, they said, is where they could really slot us in best. Because we want to, we talked, they could do it earlier, but we don't want to do it during the fall when all the leaves are out.
Yeah, because it diminishes--
Well, our leaf piles will block anything that's underneath it. So, we said, we said, we, let's do it in the, we slotted it right now for the first quarter of next year.
Okay. So, hopefully, Con Edison and the rest of the water things will also be filled by then.
Well, and if not, this technology will detect it and, and, you know, and we'll be able to-- To me, this is just another great tool to use to be able to identify areas of need, and that's really--
And we're doing, a lot cheaper than what we're doing it now.
Yeah, a lot cheaper, but, and, and really improving our efficiency.
Right, more granular.
Which is really what we're looking for, which is great.
Looks neat. So, you learned this, what, the thing that you attended? Is that how you found out about it?
I was at the program I went to, but then Michael's seen it as well. So, the two of us between our two associations, and then, you know, Michael and I. Michael and I are already talking to some other groups to figure out how to leverage that into maybe an even better product that we could, uh, we can get some help with. We're trying to, trying to work through our associations to see if we can get some other people to match in, to do some better, like even help us on the long-term planning.
Great.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? Can't wait to see the product.
Justy Epstein?
Yes.
Justy Fisher?
Yes.
Justy Heiser?
Yes.
Justy Marino?
Yes.
And Mayor Klein.
Yes, thank you. Administrator's report.
Okay, last Saturday, we had our pumpkin patch event. It was really a nice event. We, I think, I'm always just impressed with how the rec department seemed to order just the amount, right amount of pumpkins. I think we had under 30 pumpkins left, I think, which is pretty darn good. When you look at the hundreds that they get. They have to do it by pallet, too, so that was pretty good. Uh, this Saturday, October 26, from 10:30 to 12, is our Halloween event, which is always a lot of fun. If nobody's ever gone, try to get there. It's just so much fun. Everybody laughs and has a good time, seeing all the dogs that are dressed up in costumes and going through a parade, and getting a, an opportunity to really meet with the main society who's there, and which is another nice connection. They'll be adoptable dogs, so it's a, it's a real fun event. We'll have face painting and other activities as well.
What time is that?
From 10:30 to noon.
And it's going to be a beautiful day, so I know that--
We'll take it.
--the pumpkin, um, patch thing was exceedingly popular because of the great weather.
It was beautiful. It was beautiful.
How can you fail?
Yeah.